Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here.
And trustee Takaoka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Okay, we have a forum present. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Ow, ow, ow. Oh my God.
Don't turn. You're fine.
Oh my God. My knee.
Turn without backing out.
No, my, no, my foot got caught in the carpet. It's like a knee injury. That's okay. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scoot in slowly, please.
Okay, Roger's gonna take his time going back. Okay, all right. I'm gonna have to go to the injury tent for a check. Of course, we don't have the fire department to do. Okay. Well, in any event. There any citizens that wish to address the board on any matter other than what's on committee at all? Because if it's not committed at all, I recognize you have committed at all.
Yes.
You wanna come here? This is, this is on something you want to talk about. Yeah, okay, fine. This might be a ray of sunshine. And what's your name?
Anari Amara.
Anari? You wanna spell your name for, you know, the clerk order?
Um, A-N-E-R-I-A-M-A-R-A. Okay, um, hello, my name is Anari Amara, and I have noticed a significant issue regarding the protected left turn into the residences at Cuneo Mansions and Gardens, specifically Cuneo Boulevard and North Milwaukee Avenue. I first noticed this issue when I befriended a resident there. Every time I would approach the light, it was always a red arrow, but not a single car was in sight. The protected left turn light was the only thing truly preventing me from making a left turn. So I wondered if there were any legality issues behind the necessity of this light. Turns out, there's not. I went through the entire Illinois compiled statutes, vehicle code 625, and there is no explicit or implicit statement that requires a protected left turn at intersections involving a neighborhood unless specified by local traffic control devices per section 11801. The law emphasizes that turns must be made within reasonable safety. Reasonable safety. Let's keep this in mind. I now want to direct your attention to the safety that this arrow is aimed to protect us with. I have some images here that show what kind of risks that we are dealing with. The specific times of day at which these pictures are taken are included in like those images I gave.
Where's this light at?
Um, Cuneo Mansion.
In the third and where?
Two.
It's the one just south of the train tracks at Accura.
Across from Accura.
It takes you into...
So you were, you were heading north?
Into the Polte Homes?
Yeah, into Polte. So you're, you're driving north on Milwaukee?
Yeah.
And, and your point is you, you wanna turn left into the neighborhood?
Yeah.
And, and it's always a red arrow. It never, the green isn't...
I mean, it never changes.
It changes, but very briefly.
Infrequently or briefly.
Yeah, I'll get into that soon.
Just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Wait, did you time it?
What?
Did you time it?
Oh, it's like five seconds, yeah.
Well, okay. Were there a lot of cars in line?
Um, there were, yeah, sometimes there are, sometimes there not, but...
Well, how about when you were there?
Oh, like when I was turning left?
Yeah.
Oh, like there was no one coming, as you can see in like the photos of it.
No, you were the only one making a left.
Yeah, but also a lot of other residents face this issue. I did a survey. I'll get into that soon. Um, so, as you can clearly see from these images, all taken at different times, most of the time little or no colors are present, and left turns can be made without any risk. I then conducted a stratified random survey with a sample size of 15 houses. I asked them two questions. One, if they believed that the left turn signal light was, if there's any value in that, and two, if they had any comment to make about the light. So 15 out of the 15 random individuals within the community believed that the light should become an unprotected left. Three people decided to comment. Here's one quote, "Whenever I see that the light is green, a rare instance, I go like 70 miles per hour so that I can make the light because it literally never turns green. And when it does, it stays green for five seconds." So circling back to reasonable safety, it seems that the light promotes the exact opposite.
So doing 70, he'd rather kill himself.
Yeah, it's just like...
So that he can make the left turn.
Yeah, there are some teens that are a little bit...
It doesn't sound real rational.
I know, yeah. It's just like some teen that I interviewed.
Did you get his license plate number? Keith, we want you to take care of it. You're speeding up that fast to make a left-hand turn. Come on. All right, go ahead.
And then the second quote was, "I make sure that there aren't any cops around. When it's red, I just go because there's no one there." And then the third one is, "I always turn illegally. There's just no point in waiting if there's no cars around." So I understand that transitioning from a protected left turn with a green arrow to an unprotected left turn without even a traffic light can be a significant adjustment. Therefore, I propose a flashing yellow arrow signal. Studies conducted by the Minnesota Department of Transportation have shown that a flashing yellow arrow is proven to be a safer and more efficient left turn signal. It has shown to help drivers make fewer mistakes while also causing less delay and more flexibility. Additionally, the flashing yellow arrow has worked in previous Vernon Hills cases, such as the intersection near Greg's Landing between Greg's Parkway and Butterfield. I have collected some quotes from Greg's residents about the change of the light. It's been really helpful because it moves traffic a lot faster so that cars don't pile up. I can leave for school later, and I don't have to think about alternative routes to save time. Ultimately, the Illinois compiled status vehicle code 625 has provided, has been created to provide safety to its citizens. But how can we be safe when we have residents committing illegal turns, speeding to 70 miles per hour, and breaking laws, all due to one unnecessary light? In order to solve this significant problem, a flashing yellow arrow signal must replace the current green light arrow. Thank you.
So I would, with just a flashing yellow arrow, now the people that are coming across the tracks, how would they know it's just a flashing yellow?
Well, no, you know it's a, we have a bunch of them. The county put in a number of them along Butterfield Road. There's one at Gulf, there's one at Greg's Parkway. And what it is, is you can make a left turn on the flashing yellow, but you have to yield because it's a yellow flashing arrow.
And so both parties know?
It sounds like...
No, it has nothing to do with the other...
It's like making a left.
The traffic coming at you, do they know?
No.
It doesn't make any difference. You're the one...
You're waiting for them to be gone.
You're allowed to make a left once it's safe to do so on a flashing yellow.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is the approaching traffic, they don't, they don't know that she has a flashing yellow.
Right.
That's correct.
Doesn't make any difference.
Yes, it does.
No, because she's gotta yield to anybody coming at her.
But, but it sounds like what you really want is a, is a green for a slightly longer period of time and then move it to a flashing yellow.
Yeah, that would...
Instead of, instead of, instead of just green and red.
Well, the one problem is we're gonna have to do that through the Illinois Department of Transportation because Route 21 is what's called an SRA, Strategic Regional Artillery. And so IDOT has total, pretty much control, control over that, right?
So what's, so what's the process for someone to appeal that to the county? Is that through us, or is that...
No, so this would be through IDOT. So citizens can make requests directly through IDOT. If the village wanted to make a change, we could also try to work through IDOT. I wasn't involved in, in the timing and design, but the, the thing to take into account is anytime you change the, the amount of time that you hold a left turn, that's decreasing the amount of time that you have a red light, or increasing the red light for southbound traffic on Milwaukee. So usually the way the engineers look at it is you're maximizing the total, all the movements in an intersection. So while it may be inconvenient to several residents that are wanting to turn in and hoping that would stay green longer, there's an immense amount of traffic volume on Milwaukee, so you would be backing traffic up even farther.
Well, but that's why her suggestion of the yellow flashing light makes more sense. Michigan, Iowa use them extensively.
Illinois started to.
Yeah.
Yeah, like all around.
And we've started using them around here, and they, they work fine along Butterfield Road.
Well, on Butterfield Road, though, Lake County Department of Transportation has control.
Right.
Right.
So it's not...
Right, but I mean...
Now, let me put this question to you. How about all the other intersections that people have issues that the, the right-left turn arrow is too short? So we could go all the way up and down Milwaukee Avenue if somebody complains.
Anytime it's a single left turn lane, the yellow flashing arrow in other states generally works pretty well.
Yeah, okay.
You cannot use it with a double turn.
Yeah.
I mean, there's another perfect example of a place we could, we could look at adding one is at Aspen and 60 for people on, on southbound Aspen because it's a single left turn lane. Yeah, you can't use it with a double left turn lane.
Just south of that intersection, right in front of Lazy Dog, turning left onto, onto Ring Drive going north on Milwaukee.
Well, but the issue is, this is gonna take some doing because it's IDOT.
Right, correct. That's what I said. That's what I said.
Can we get involved, or?
Nah.
Just a little quick history update. So when the subdivision was opened a few years ago, we did have the same inquiry about the, the timing of the left-hand turn signal. Our previous village engineer did look into that, and Director Venato was correct. The changing of that signal's timing impacts the other timing of all the other lights along Milwaukee Avenue. Now, the, the left turn lane arrow has not yet been adopted by IDOT as a standard. Lake County DOT did start that actually with Butterfield Road two years ago when they completed their intersection improvements, but that's right now just the Lake County level. So on Lake County roads like Butterfield Road, Illinois Department of Transportation has not yet adopted that, but, you know, other states have, and it's been very, very successful.
And we could look into talking to them.
Yeah, could we appeal to them and say, please, it's working well on Butterfield? It's our opinion that it might be helpful in some of our other intersections that, that you control.
It's duly noted, it's, it's a big lift, but we can certainly, you know...
It's just one, one extra vote basically from all the communities, but just letting them know that.
We're, we're not gonna go getting a traffic expert to push this kinda thing through. Come on. Your inconvenience, everybody's inconvenience, every day of their life, in some way, shape, or form.
Well, but I, it, no, I think, I think this is something that we can, we can talk to IDOT about because, like I said, in some of the other states, they found that it improves, improves the traffic flow.
All right, okay, Chris, write a letter, but don't, don't start spending a lot of time on this. Cause it'll turn up, there're gonna be all kinds of people that want the same kinda situation all up and down Milwaukee. And if that happens, then okay, turn it over to our state, state house rep, you know, and let him push it then. If you want his duties all over the state. But I, you know, come on. Go ahead, write the letter.
The dilemma that we face is because we don't own that road. It resides in Vernon Hills, which would make, hey, let's go to, start here, right? So because the Illinois, IDOT is Illinois Department of Transportation, there's, you know, you have county, you have, you know, village, county, state, there were federal highways, right? So we're at the state level here. And in order to change anything at the state level, at least from our experience, my experience, it takes a long time. And they kinda, you know, they'll prioritize. I think, you know, with Director Public Works Venato writing a letter, maybe we can give her some information who to contact in regards to this. And, you know, State Rep Johnson, or Senator Johnson maybe can help with this too. You know, your state local official, your, your, your state representatives can help you with this too, you know.
Yeah, it all depends on who controls the highway.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Cause, cause like, like was said, the Lake County controls Butterfield, and it was the Lake County Department of Transportation that changed their rule. But Route 60 and Route 21 are both state.
All right, cool. Thank you.
State Senator Adrian Johnson, just look her up. Like, you know, she may be able to help you with that too.
Yeah.
State Senator Adrian Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else? No? Okay. All right. Village Manager Jen Petrillo. What do you got? Service requests?
I think that's Kevin.
I'll take that one.
Oh, it's Village Manager. I thought you saw, oh, Assistant's next.
He's the next one, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to take a quick moment this evening to bring the board up to speed. A few meetings ago, I provided an update on our new service request system on our village website. We have gone live with that, and that was introduced on Saturday, November 9th. It was a, kind of a soft, cold open. We just wanted to put it out there and see how it started working as we continue to promote the service for our residents. This is a snapshot of how you can access that. You'll see the, the yellow dot on your screen there. You click on that button, and then it takes you to this separate webpage, which has all of our different forms. It just so happens that when we launched the site that Saturday afternoon, later that evening, we actually received our first request. So there was a resident that had a street light that was out, somehow navigated to our website, found the system, and was able to enter in a request. And because they used our system, our form asks specific questions to help us identify the location. So it asked for, in this case, the street pole number. So the resident provided the correct information. This was immediately sent to the crew leader that handles that type of assignment. And by noon on Monday, the request was resolved. So great kinda case study on why we're doing this and the benefits of this program. Our communications team is currently working on putting together a tutorial video to kinda help walk people through how to use this, although it is pretty straightforward. That will be published on our village's website in the, in the near future. And again, we encourage everybody to please visit the village website homepage and click on the service request system if you have any issues or things that you need from the village.
So if I wanna check these zoning law, this is gonna make it easier?
You could do a general question on there, type in your question, and then that would go to the correct staff member, and we can help you with that.
Okay. So I can type in, can somebody on staff tell me how many townhomes can be built per acre? Cause I haven't heard from... Is that a tough one, Andrew? Did you ever find out?
It's 14.
I think it was actually included in last week's update, wasn't it?
Okay, how many is it?
It was, isn't it?
How many is it per acre? Is it 12 or 14?
It's about eight and a half. It's about eight and a half.
Eight and a half what?
Eight and a half per acre, units per acre.
No, R7 is closer to 14.
Jesus Christ.
So the R7 is, is for multifamily buildings. The townhome density comes from the attached single family.
Okay.
So it's eight and a half per acre?
About eight and a half, correct.
Oh, yeah. Well, that makes it even more interesting.
Yeah.
Cause it won't, I wonder what year we changed that? Do you know how long that's been in place? Cause it used to be either, like you said, 14.
That's R7, that's, that's not townhomes.
Well, that's a townhome.
No, no, that's Congress.
Okay, what did we use before? So we used eight and a half? I don't think so, Tim. R7. What is R7 zoning?
Townhome is R5, I think.
No, I mean, I mean...
So the, the townhome comes from the R6. It's attached single family.
Okay.
And that's the eight and a half units per acre.
And that was enacted when?
Uh, it's been quite a while. I'd have to double check and see.
Like 20 years?
It's been quite a, yeah.
Okay. We just haven't had, okay, I guess it hasn't come up. All right, I guess what I'm thinking, like, so Aspen Point, those are considered, what are those considered?
Those are also townhomes, attached single family.
Okay. So all these that we're looking at here, are any of these attached at the new, new project?
Yes, that concept, we would consider that to be attached single family.
And how many units per, per building?
They are, in terms of the total density for the whole project, it's about 21.
Townhomes separate, zero lot length, nothing's attached?
So they're considered attached, that's the...
No, the buildings, are those units attached like Aspen Point?
Yes.
Okay. So Aspen Point, how many units per acre there?
I, I think it was about 13 or 14.
It says 13.44.
But that was allowed, that's under the ordinance?
Yes, it was allowed.
So how is that different than what we're talking about with, what focuses?
But that's not on tonight's agenda, so...
No, no, I don't care.
Oh, okay.
How is that different than Focus's proposal we had two weeks ago?
I would, I would consider them to be very similar.
So it is gonna be 12 or 14 units per acre?
They're proposing about 21.
Answer my question, will you please? How many is allowed per acre, 12 or 14, without a variance?
It's about eight and a half.
It's not ma...
Did they get a variance?
So where do you get...
They got a variance.
No, 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 no.
Did they get a variance at Aspen Point?
No. You're talking, he's up to 21 units per acre.
The concept at the mall was around 21.
21, even though it's only 45?
Per acre.
No, it's 45 total.
Yes, but 21 per acre.
Yeah, it was 48 units.
Well, I thought there was 2.8 or nine acres.
And there's 48 units, I think.
So how many acres is it?
It was 2.3.
2.3, you said?
Yes.
You're, I'm confused.
So I think the ordinance is 8.5. Aspen Point received a variance for 13 to 14.
To 13.4.
13.4. The townhomes at the mall, a total of 48, but it comes down to about 21 per acre. So, again, if we push it through, it, well, if it goes through, it's gonna have to be another variance. And I think, maybe to your point, is 8.5 too low to have our ordinance at 8.5 to even start with?
Well, Aspen Point's variance involved a lot of moving parts. It was also...
How long ago was that?
Well, there was, there was a land swap involved in that that got us the land for the library. There were, there were a lot of moving parts in that when that was...
I mean, I would, I would argue there's a lot of moving parts at the mall too, with this too. So I think having, obviously, it's not on the agenda tonight to have a full discussion about this, but I think, obviously, as, you know, Mayor is correct, there's gonna have to be some kind of variance.
Right, but it's not even zone residential, is it?
Right, it's only allowed via the PUD.
Yeah, yeah, it's a PUD, so...
So that's a difference.
They'll, they'll need to justify everything throughout the...
So do we have an R7 zoning category?
We do.
Okay, how many units does that allow?
14.
I believe about 14.
Yeah.
Okay.
From my education, what does the R7 cover then?
It's for multifamily, so apartments, condos, that sort of...
So like the domain, the, that's R7, right?
Yeah, meaning like six units in a building is what ours is, where I live.
Okay.
And we have, we have 96 units on about seven and a half acres.
Okay, and how many units per building are we gonna have with Focus? How many units are in one building?
In the...
Focus?
The mixed-use building?
At the AMC Theater parking lot?
At the town.
How many units?
One, one per building.
Are they connected in any way?
Yeah, so there, there are, they range from, I think, five to eight or nine. I can't remember.
In one building?
In one, in one connected set, correct.
But the walls are connected?
Yes.
Okay, there's no space?
There's no way that can constitute R7.
We better revisit, we better revisit this zoning. Cause if you're, if you're coming in at 6.1, what'd you say, 6.8?
8.5.
8.5.
8.5. This isn't 8.5 there.
Because it's a PUD.
It's a PUD, it's...
I know it's a PUD. We can do anything we want with a PUD. I'm just saying, hey, council, you wanna give me an answer next week? Look at this zoning ordinance. And if it's R7, you're saying it's, where it's allowed 14 units?
Yes.
Okay. Per acre?
Correct.
Okay. So under, but under that zoning ordinance, we could possibly do, what, 24? No, we could do 28 units and maybe, cause there's a third of an acre, do, so we could do how many then?
It's, it's, it's pretty close, about 25, 26.
Okay. Well, as we speak here, that's gonna be a huge variance. I don't care PUD or not. It's a, it's a lot. You know, okay. All right, go ahead. Let's, I'll, I'll move on here.
We're still on...
Yep. System update, yeah.
We're good.
Hey, you know, Andrew, next time I bring something up at a board meeting, you call me. You didn't call me. You gotta call me. You understand? Yeah. Okay, let's go. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm all completely...
He's done.
Okay.
Got what he said.
Okay, Vernon Hills Honors Military Banner Program update. Today was the ceremony, right?
That's right, Mayor. Thank you. As the month of November includes Veterans Day, a day intended to recognize and celebrate those who served, we would like to provide an update on village efforts to support and recognize veterans and those in the armed forces, as well as information on the Military Banner Program. In partnership with the American Legion, the village proudly supports our veteran community, as well as those currently serving in the U.S. Armed Forces. For residents who are beginning their service, when the American Legion and/or village become aware of a person enlisting or leaving for basic training, a send-off occurs, which includes a presence from our first responders. If a service member was deployed in a designated combat zone, when they return, Operation Welcome Home occurs, where the service member is escorted by our first responders to their home and formally recognized by the village board. Mayor, you may recall, the very first one was Corporal James Hulse, who was in the United States Marine Corps, served in Iraq, and was escorted home by our police department, fire department, to his mom, and very well received. And since then, 11 others were recognized and escorted home to their parents. During summer, the village and police department support veterans and service members receiving treatment at the VA with a Day of Recreation at Big Bear Lake with the James and Helen Hyer Fishing Derby. The village is also a proud supporter of the Midwest Veterans Closet, their Annual Code Drive, and the United States Marine Corps Toys for Tots Drive, which is currently underway. The village hall, police department, and Vernon Hills Municipal Golf Course are all drop-off locations. The village also maintains perhaps one of the most beautiful veterans memorials in the state of Illinois, located at our Arbor Theater. Thank you to the village board for supporting this, and Public Works for maintaining such beautiful grounds, especially during Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And during early 2022, at the urging of Dr. Oppenheim, staff researched the concept of a Military Banner Program, which has the intent to identify and recognize residents who served with honor in the U.S. Armed Forces. This program was implemented and is known as the Vernon Hills Honors Military Banner Program. Funding exists for 20 banners each calendar year with the name, image, branch of service, and combat deployment information displayed. Banners are produced in late January and displayed from Memorial Day to Veterans Day on a street or an area designated by the village board. In partnership with the American Legion, over 40 Vernon Hills residents have been, have been recognized to date. Last week, the class of 2024 banners were officially retired for the season, and earlier this evening, veterans and/or their surviving family members were invited to the municipal golf course, where Commander Todd Renahan, Trustees Cook, Trustee Forster, and Dr. Oppenheim officially presented each veteran and/or their family member their banner. The veterans and family members who attended this event expressed sincere appreciation to the village for the recognition and the banners. Staff, along with Todd Renahan, commander of the local legion post, would like to take this opportunity to update the board on the status of the 2025 application period. As of today's date, we have received six applications. A special note, during this time last year, the village, the village had over 20 applications and had a waitlist for people. The village does utilize its communications platforms, which include social media, our cable access channel, our website, electronic message boards, and the village voice to make persons aware of this program. Hawthorne Mall has even partnered with the Legion and Village and has made replica banners and displayed information on the application process throughout the mall. The Daily Herald has covered the program at least twice, not counting staff submissions, which have also helped promote the program. Former village trustee Jim Schultz, now representing the American Legion and AMVETS, has visited our senior living facilities and attempted to recruit applicants. Perhaps the greatest promotion of the program is when the banners are flying invisible. This has occurred on Deer Path as banners were on display during July 4th events, and along Lakeview and Hawthorne Parkway when banners were on display during fireworks, Vernon Hills Days, and Ribfest. Staff will continue to share information with the residents and promote the program until we do hit our number of 20. As we are approaching the period when we begin to make the banners for the next display period, Commander Todd Renahan has requested an opportunity to address the board and speak on the program. Commander?
Thank you, John. Thank you, trustees, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the last few years of support. It's, it's hard to believe that it's going and going, and it's not only see my banner, but my daughter's and some, some, some that served in World War II. In fact, we have a gentleman Stanley Spiller there at 100 years old. In fact, we have a gentleman, Stanley Spiller, there at a hundred years old. We've had quite a few people, uh, have their banner up there, but I think it's, uh, the time that we should recognize those that serve the village, and the police, the fire, Public Works, the staff, that they should be recognized in this upcoming season. And I think, uh, I think you guys will agree with me, and ladies, but I think, I also think that the first banner up should be John Petrelli's. I think he should have it in gold, probably lit up the whole time. Except for you, if you have an armed guard, have the Police Department, uh, their chief, but, uh, but I think John Petrelli should definitely be up there in the, wherever, wherever you can, put up there twice. The front and the back, but, uh, we, we, we can't thank John enough that, uh, he's doing the legwork. I just get to smile and talk to y'all at, uh, in the evening. But, uh, the, the support you guys have had, in fact, it was something to see, because I live on Deer Path, so it's nice for me, and then when they moved to Lakeview Parkway, some of the neighbors said, "Todd, where are the banners?"
They're there.
They're there. They just moved. Higher visibility, but, uh, so, you know, it's Public Works, the whole village. You know exactly what you're doing, there's no question about that. And I tell the, the parents that, as veterans, it's nice to know that we're not in some back alley somewhere for ten minutes throughout the year. We are front and center, bright, first-class all the way. So thank you very much for that. And Dr. Oppenheim, how this snowball started working, wow, can't thank you enough. So I, I would suggest that, uh, all the staff, any of the staff that's serving the military, let them, uh, be recognized in the ne, in the upcoming year.
What, what do we, is our, uh, application process only if you live in town?
Yes, yes, sir.
So we gotta change that?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's gotten, we've run through the, through the veterans, and so-
Yeah.
Currently, it's live or have lived in town, not, not that you have.
That's correct.
But the goal would be to change it to-
Jan's never lived here.
Live, have, live, have lived, or worked.
Sounds like it.
He worked here.
But, but I will, I will, I will echo what, what Todd said, uh, the, you know, this was Dr. Oppenheim's idea in that, but John is the one who has done all of the heavy lifting, and has just done an, just done an incredible job with this.
So now, we, we have to look at him on a poster?
Put it right in front of your house, Mayor.
Well, then we gotta look, we gotta look at, and one for the chief, then.
So-
Absolutely.
Well, the chief, chief could go up there.
Absolutely, so, the chief and I have talked about this, while I appreciate, uh, Todd coming in here, and, uh, and Dr. Oppenheim, and the rest of the board, uh, you know, suggesting that my banner should be up first. The chief and I have talked about this, and there's an expression in the military, especially for the leadership, you know, others before self. The chief has done an exceptional job of recruiting, uh, some exceptional people, people that have served, and, and there's several that have served in combat. Uh, we've also had some that recently, were recently deployed in Africa. So, you know, I, at some point, I would love to submit my picture, but, uh, I've talked about the chief, and I think the chief agrees, while we both served, we both have Airborne wings, the people that served in combat within the village should be recognized first. And our goal for this, this calendar year, for this January, is we need to get to that twenty. There was the funded, uh, amount, we have that funding. We're fourteen short, so it, at, uh, if the board's so inclined, at Todd's request, we would like to reach out to the Police Department and get some of those combat veterans first.
Yeah.
As I mentioned, some tonight, Nakuro and Trustee Cook, get some that served in Afghanistan, some in Iraq.
Well, plus, can we do it for, like, World War II veterans that are obviously deceased?
We're trying.
Well, they're already, they're already part of it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I should get one for my father.
Well, did he live in town?
He did five, yeah, no, I grew up on the South Side. If Jan's getting in, my old man should get in.
No, but your, but your father didn't work in town, that's the point. It's either, it's either-
Or qualifying as working in town.
Living or, living, live.
How about the mayor's father was in World War II for five years?
For that-
In England?
That special dispensary.
I don't get, I don't get a poster for him. We could, we could, you gotta have a variance.
No, but I, I think, John, I'd be, I'd be happy to, uh, you know, take your suggestion, because there are a number of the officers I know that have, have served, uh-
Yeah.
I, I echo John's point that leaders do eat last, and the chief and, uh, John are definitely leaders, uh, amongst, but they're, they'll get a banner.
Yeah. Well, your dad was in World War II.
Uh, yeah, my father was-
Maybe we should have special banners for them.
But I, these are people that, uh, that have been here, in fact, be honest, uh, if we were at a point of a list of, uh, only twenty, uh, individuals, then be honest, uh, pulled twenty-one and twenty-two.
Yeah.
So-
Except we gotta charge them a few more bucks, the chief and Jan.
I'll pay, I'll pay for it.
And then, with, with, their, their money would just go to an Honor Flight, the extra money. Because what does it cost to make the banner?
So there, there's no charge to any of the applicants, so the village generously funds this program. It's, uh, each budget year, uh, so if we do it, uh, in groups of five, it's, it's approximately two hundred dollars a banner. So we have plenty of funding for that, that's, the funding has never been the issue.
Well, what I was gonna say, for you and the chief, you make a donation-
Absolutely.
-to the Honor Flight.
Extra push.
You ever done that, chief? You ever paid for an Honor Flight?
Yeah, I, I have made, uh-
You did?
Donations over the years, several times.
Did you actually give him about fifteen hundred bucks for an Honor Flight?
I've made donations to the Honor Flight.
But you didn't pay for one?
I've made donations to the-
I made, I did two, okay? I'm okay. I just satisfied putting, putting up his father and my father, and I'll be happy. Plus, your father. Wasn't he a veteran?
Yeah, but he never lived here, and we're, we're, we're kinda going a little astray here.
But we, uh, we appreciate, uh, the village's time and consideration for the staff and all those that have worked for the village, and we look forward to seeing another successful year. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Alright. Okay. Do you wanna speak on this, uh, time? Or is this just for us to digest?
Which?
Oh, it's just for, uh, the closing, thank you for your review.
Yeah. Okay, same with you, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then next is our, how many votes, votes vote agenda? Is there, uh, a motion to approve items A through I? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Next item is approval and passage of resolution twenty-twenty-four dash zero-three-two, a resolution granting approval on an outdoor special event at Hawthorne Mall. Andrew?
Thank you. Uh, Representative of the mall is here to, uh, take questions on this. This event, uh, which is scheduled for Saturday, December fourteenth, is similar, uh, to the Harvest Fest, which was a fall-themed event, uh, in the same location. Uh, the, uh, the mall is planning, uh, holiday-themed food vendors, um, I don't believe there's a movie this time around, but an ice skating rink, uh, and, and other activities for children, uh, to bring activity to the, uh, to Hawthorne Row. So the, uh, resolution, uh, in your packet does have some conditions of approval, primarily, uh, related to ensuring that they do work with the police, uh, for additional security. With that, if you would like to come up and, uh, answer any questions the board has.
Hi, everyone, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Tia Lintum, I'm the Marketing Director over at Hawthorne.
Okay.
Hello.
So you wanna talk about this?
For sure. Um, so, this is an event similar to, um, what we did for Harvest Fest, just to kind of boost some, um, of the holiday spirit over at Hawthorne, especially for our new retailers like Anthropology, FP Movement, and Love Sack. So the event is going to feature, um, an ice skating rink, also some food, uh, food vendors, and some, um, holiday vendors, as well as live ice sculptures, and, um, a heated tent as well, and the tent permit is in with the village, so we're just waiting on that approval. But a very fun event, hot cocoa and, um, chocolate, just to kind of have some of that new, you know, holiday spirit outside at the row, since this is a new, um, location for Hawthorne.
What's the date on this, even?
Yep, uh, December fourteenth, Saturday, from five to eight PM.
I have a question. Is your ice skating rink, is it just there for that one time?
Correct, it's just there for that one time through Recordahit.
Is it a, um, like, electrically cooled type ice skating rink, or is it based on air temperature?
Um, it's like the fake ice, so it's gly, so it's, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I was, I was, that's a lot of work to put.
Yeah, and we're not, we're not, uh-
It'd be cool to keep it there, like, all season.
I won't be out there with the cooling, trying to make the ice, um.
Or Zamboni.
Zamboni, yeah.
So, how are the vacancies at the mall right now? Are they high, low?
Yeah.
High?
No, so we, you know, we are doing great with some of our specialty leasing residents, so we have a lot of new and, um, like, temp retailers for holiday. Um, we just actually opened, we had a ribbon cutting in October that some of you were there at, uh, for over ten local businesses inside the center that were recently opened, and already, from the last week, we've seen an additional five-ish retailers open.
And these are all inline stores?
Uh, most of them are inline, some are, uh, like, the carts outside in the middle of the center.
You mean kiosks?
Yeah, kiosks.
Okay. Alright.
Are any of these vendors listed here, or any actual tenants of the mall?
So, uh, a majority of our tenants do come out, just depending on staffing. The vendors that are listed, um, those are some from our Harvest Fest, but those ones are not, um, inside the center.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just one moment. Well, Tia is walking, just wanna say a special thanks to the mall, Tia and her partners. So that, as I mentioned, they help, uh, promote the banner program throughout the mall, great partners in that. They've also always made themselves available to staff, uh, as, as you're aware. The, the emergency operations plan requires that the, uh, village, if they're able to, to designate warming shelters when winter, winter and inclement weather comes. And the mall's always been, uh, agreeable to that, and enlisting that is, uh, one of the sites. So as winter comes and the cooler temperatures come, the mall has been a designated spot for Lake County, so that'll be one of the comments we, uh, post on communications. But thanks, Tia, for your partnership and support of not only our village events, but, uh, the banner program and then being a designated cooling shelter for the winter.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, is there any other, I guess, uh, is there any new business? Or new commu, uh, communications?
One, one, one item for communications, Mayor? Get the next slide.
Yeah, Mayor.
Okay, so, uh, this is our reminder to, uh, join us on Saturday, November thirtieth, at four-thirty PM at Century Park for the Holiday Lighting Celebration Event. Again, special thanks to Rustoleum for granting use of their parking lot. The Vernon Hills Police Department and Countryside Fire will begin their escort of Santa at four-thirty PM from the fire station on Deer Path. The lighting event is anticipated to start just after the arrival to the site. Please note, this is a new location at the northwest corner of Lakeview and Hawthorne Parkway. Uh, we hope everybody's in a celebratory mood. As we're aware, November thirtieth was a big day for, uh, Big Ten football, with a lot of games on during the early afternoon period. Uh, but right after that, uh, come out and join us, join your neighbors, join your, uh, your family and friends. Uh, this, this, uh, event is going to be supported by No Manches, uh, located down in, uh, twelve forty, East Highway forty-five. They are gonna be providing free hot cocoa, uh, coffee, homemade churros, and sweetbread to everybody in attendance.
What's the name of it?
It's, uh, No, No Manches.
No Manches, yeah.
No, No Manches.
Is that a restaurant?
Yeah, they're down by, in the-
It's where, where, where Roti used to be, and, and the-
Okay.
Mike, can you go back to that, the slide of the picture of the location? Thank you. Well, there's a tree right there.
That is the tree, right?
Where's the tree?
Right, right there.
Oh, okay. Alright. Okay.
We may have to work on a new one, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does anybody, any, any more questions on this? Okay. There's no, no other communication?
Yeah, you've got, well, you've got.
What? Oh, Craig? Oh, okay, sure. Alright, well, needless to say, uh, and I'm sure any number of us already heard, but we send our condolences to, to, uh, trustee Craig Takioko and his family. Uh, his dad passed away on the thirteenth of November. His dad's name was Terry. And, uh, needless to say, we're thinking of Craig and his family, and, uh, I don't, you know, I think he said, what, they're gonna have a private service?
Yes.
Yeah. Because he was cremated out in Las Vegas where he was living, so, uh, okay. Anything else?
Yeah, um, October twenty-fourth, um, I was with staff and, and several other people at, um, uh, Northwestern Mutual, did their ribbon cutting at, uh, Three Hawthorne Parkway, and they have now taken over the entire floor. And, uh, I got the chance to talk to, uh, Steve, uh, Coppola, who's the, the executive director there. And, um, when they were deciding what to do in terms of expanding versus staying in Vernon Hills, um, it, it was real nice to hear him say that he, uh, went to his entire workforce and talked to them about, because they were, several other communities had inquired about them moving there, and his workforce told us, uh, uh, his workforce told him that they wanted to stay in Vernon Hills because of all the diversity of housing, and because of, uh, all of the retail and the restaurants and stuff like that. And so, rather than move to another city, they expanded here, so, uh, it, it was very nice to hear that, um, a business that was expanding could expand and not need, need to move out of town.
What's the name of the building they're in?
They're at, uh, Three Hawthorne Parkway there.
That, that's the name of the building, Mayor, Three Hawthorne Parkway, it's the one immediately, uh, west of Rustoleum. Four stories.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, so it was, it was very pleasing to hear that, that a business in town was, uh, when they looked at a number of other communities, the final decision was easy for them. The, the staff all wanted to stay here, so, it was very nice to hear.
Alright.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So I'm in.
Board meeting, go to committee at all.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries. Like to call the committee, the whole meeting, to order. Is there a motion to approve? The minutes, forget to it. Approve the committee of the whole minutes of the November fourth, twenty-twenty-four meeting.
So I'm in.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay. First item, concept review, Raising Cane's. How you doing?
How are you, President Byrne? Nice to see you again.
You ought to state your name for the record.
Scott H. Gendell. CEO, Terrico Inc., based in Womet. First of all, I want to thank the staff for your hard work. It's been a pleasure dealing with you and I developed in a lot of communities and I would say this to them, to all of you here, that your staff was as good a staff as I've worked with anywhere in metropolitan Chicago. So thank you, Byrne. Terrico is a company I founded in, with my wife Lisa, I shouldn't ever forget that. In 1986, we've been involved in the development of 120 commercial properties in 12 states. Our history in Vernon Hills dates back to, what is it, Roger, 1988? And we're still involved in, in three properties here, including the former Red Lobster property in front of the shopping center further east to us. We're involved in the Walgreens Buffalo Wild Wings property and of course, we were the original developers of the Sport Mart and then Sports Authority as well as TGI Fridays that was operating at this location for approximately 25 years.
Who took over Sports Authority?
Well, Sport Mart took over Sports, Sport Mart was taken, was bought by Sports Authority.
But, so you owned it initially?
We, we owned, we bought the seven acres, we developed it in conjunction with the Hockberg family and.
Who am I thinking of that, was there a subsequent owner after that?
No, I think, I think Bears Fit was the successor to Sports Authority. Sports Authority went into Chapter 11 nationally and they closed down all their locations. We had another location of theirs, one in Southern, well, two more locations, one in Southern California that we sold and another one in Dublin, Ohio, that we placed Sport Mart with after they went out.
Did you have the Walgreens in town?
We, we managed the Walgreens for a third party.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I know what that is.
Yeah. And, you know, I would say too that Buffalo Wild Wings sales are picking up a little bit, so thank you all for supporting it and going there for football games. I truly appreciate that. One of the things that obviously I want to talk to you about tonight is we've got three witnesses here, Brendan May from KLA, Sarah Holmes representing Raising Cane's and Tom Sefransky from Kimley Horn. In addition to that, your staff has undertaken an independent traffic study through CivilTech, so there are three independent engineers who have empirically verified what our experts will show you tonight relative to traffic and the fact that we could probably accommodate three to four times the traffic that we're projecting on a conservative level and still function easily out of that site. And, and don't take it from me, listen to experts who are licensed traffic engineers and they'll talk to that as well.
What do you think our staff says?
I think they're supportive. But they can tell you for the.
Staff want to speak today?
To which aspect of the project?
Just doing it there because of the traffic.
So we had a third-party consultant, CivilTech, look at access specifically in and out of the driveway, and I don't want to steal their thunder, they're going to talk about some of the changes that they made or proposing to that access drive. But based on the timing of the traffic signals at 60 in Lakeview as well as Phillip in Lakeview, there are, it's shown to be adequate gaps based on their peak hours that they're operating to be able to get, make the left and right turn out of that intersection.
Okay. So maybe we don't have to beat this death.
Well, they also did, they also did an excellent job of changing the flow pattern enough to give, to give us a longer queue.
I guess what I'm saying, do we need to hear a whole spiel on this? It's a Raising Cane's.
I don't have a vote.
No, I'm, I'm speaking, here, here, Todd, I'm speaking to the board here. Does anybody?
Why don't we put up the, with the changes and the traffic flow so we can see, and anybody viewing at home can kind of see it too, so we have it on record here. It's, can we just go to the?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you guys okay with that? Just kind of.
So I'm going to call up Brendan May from KLA, who performed our, our traffic study and took to heart your comments as trustee Coke, it's Coke, correct?
Cook.
Cook, Cook. Trustee Cook pointed out, we, we made various changes to the site plan in deference to, to your comments, your staff's comments and our engineers' recommendations.
Hello, everyone, thanks for having me today. Also, just as we all know, the site's located in the southwest corner of Town Line Road with Lakeview Parkway. So we had prepared an industry standard traffic impact study that took a look at trip generation, capacity analysis, adequacy of the access drive and all the above. And based on feedback received through this group, we started preparing recommendations for onsite improvements to direct Raising Cane's traffic to the north, then west to Raising Cane's, then through the front along Bears Fit. So since, I think the last time this has been presented, some changes that have been added is we added an additional drive-through to the right side sign on the west side of that first access drive, so there's two signs indicating to make drivers to make a right turn. We've implicated striping on the driveway to indicate that to, in order to access to the site, you would turn right. And then we've also implemented a do not enter sign at the north side represented by number five. So as vehicles are exiting Raising Cane's, they would use the second from the right point, creating two travel paths where the far east drive aisle is for inbound and then the second from the east would be outbound, separating those traffic flows. We also incorporated recommendations regarding striping out crosswalks near the Bears Fit main doors and then providing speed bumps to the east of the east crosswalk and the west of the west crosswalk to make that path less desirable to be traveled by Raising Cane's patron. So these are the, the paths I was indicating, so the primary path that's going to be signed is going to be green, solid green for E inbound and solid pink or magenta for outbound with the dash line indicating an alternate route. But we think with the signage and the crosswalks and pedestrian enhancements with speed bumps and et cetera, that the two solid routes would be the primary travel routes.
Can you go back to that one for just a second?
Sure.
That, the red arrow is the, the one, one of the points that was a problem for me and you can, you can see with the additional distance on that, that you can stack at least another two or three cars there, so that'll, that'll help the flow.
Correct, yeah. So by having most of the outbound traffic, as you indicated, further west, there is additional stacking at the Lakeview Parkway access drive. And then also in order to mitigate the potential queues that are occurring for outbound traffic, we are putting, or we're recommending that a right turn pocket be added so that you could have a left and a right turn occur at the same time and separate that queue from one lane into two.
How many cars can stack in that right turn out, just one?
One before the crosswalk or two if that first vehicle pulls up to the edge of pavement to wait for their gap, so one to two. So just a quick highlight, we're confident in the site's ability to be able to handle the traffic generating by Raising Cane's for a number of reasons. Firstly, based on surveys that we've conducted at the Rolling Meadows and Gurnee locations, the peak drive-through queue is 12 vehicles where I think 23 or 24 is proposed at this site. Based on the results of our capacity analysis, the average time it would take a vehicle to exit this access drive onto Lakeview Parkway is approximately 14 seconds. One to two vehicles, so in the total projected condition, there's one to two vehicles per minute that'll be attempting to make that left turn. Through our own traffic modeling, the 95th percentile queues for outbound traffic movements can be accommodated without extending past the primary outbound parking aisle, which was the pink or magenta line that was indicated. As is mentioned before, the signalized intersections of Lakeview Parkway with Town Line Road and Phillip Road do create gaps in the traffic stream, which allow traffic to exit onto Lakeview Parkway efficiently. Based on crash data we received from iDOT between 2019 and 2023, there were no crashes reported at the access drive intersection during the last five years. And ultimately, the findings of our traffic evaluation have been confirmed for accuracy by the village's engineering consultant, who not only just reviewed our work, but as my understanding, that they took our data and conducted their own traffic modeling and evaluation and ultimately agreed with our findings.
Chief, can you give your input on this with the changes and how you feel about it?
Yeah, I, I would certainly be comfortable with the engineering assessment of this, you know, so if, if, if the counts are right and the measures are right, I, I don't have any other concerns.
Thank you. And from Raising Cane's, Sarah, can we ask you a question? Are you operations, construction or?
Property development.
Property development. So your arrival rates at Raising Cane Restaurants with a projected volume at this will be during your peak periods, I'm assuming lunch is your peak or is dinner?
It's generally, it's actually kind of funny, some restaurants peak during lunch around the one to two sometimes, and then sometimes it's during dinner, so it just depends on the location specifically.
So given the high school nearby and everything and all the office complex, this is probably going to be a high peak, high lunch volume projected restaurant. What are you projecting arrival rates, like when, you know, five cars at a time, four cars at a time that pop into the drive-through that you are projecting? Or what are you projecting during those peak periods of total cars? Any concept of that?
I would actually have to turn it back over to them because they pulled the data.
Okay.
What we push this down?
So just some background on this, so in our traffic evaluation, we ourselves conducted surveys at the, again, the Gurnee and Rolling Meadows locations. We also took a look at industry standard data, it's called the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, they have a land use code for fast food restaurants. And then Raising Cane's also had previous data for, I believe, Algonquin and Joliet. So we looked at all of those data sets and we took the highest lunch, dinner and Saturday lunch.
What's your highest lunch?
So the highest lunch was in Gurnee and that was 80 vehicles in and out.
So 40 in, 40 out or 80 in?
80 in and then 80 out.
And that's a one-hour period?
Over a one-hour period, correct.
And then what about your dinner high peak?
So dinner came in similarly at 76 and then Saturday was 100.
For dinner?
Saturday lunch.
What's Saturday, so dinner during the week is 76 is your high?
Correct.
Saturday lunch was 100 in, 100 out?
Yeah. For the, the highest, the highest.
No, 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 I'm with you, yeah, I am with you. What's your capacity for the drive-through per hour there? Like how many cars can you potentially theoretically push through with your average, you know, wait times, which I think you said it was two, somebody said it was two minutes?
Two minutes, 28 seconds.
Two minutes, 28 seconds on a side-by-side with them, you know, if you're using both lanes, your capacity is probably about 150, 160 is my guess. I'll do the math for you.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'm not, not turning the specifics, but I do know based on our surveys that the average queue was about four or five vehicles with a peak of 12, which could be well accommodated.
And then the egress out of the parking lot, I think it was 11 seconds per car to turn on, on average, but it doesn't mean it's going to be 11.
12 to 14 seconds, I think it was.
Well, and if I may, the Gurnee site is projecting a higher gross than this particular restaurant, so their counts are about 10% higher volume than what's expected at this particular.
I understand, I understand.
So it's not quite.
Wouldn't it be nice though if it was higher than Gurnee?
The one thing I would say, and let's say even if you use the higher end, 14 seconds, you know, and, and you were releasing two cars every two minutes, 28 seconds, okay, so if those two cars are going to the egress and they're waiting 14 seconds, one may be going right, one may be going left, you know, but.
Well, that's the concept I'm thinking about is I.
Yeah, you have plenty of time to, even if you doubled those numbers, you'd have plenty of time.
I know this is just concept, right?
Like what?
This is just concept, right?
Yeah, still, this is just to decide whether to send it on to technical.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, wait, yeah, 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 bring Todd for it. Do you want to, you want to push this to technical review?
Yeah.
Give this, give the spiel.
Sure, so tonight does not constitute a formal approval, as you know, you've heard this in May. Tonight is a chance for additional input. You will go to technical review if there is consensus. To move this to complete technical review, you will come back before this board only after a public hearing and a formal recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission for formal consideration by the village board at a later time.
Okay.
Is there a consensus to move forward?
Trustee Schenk?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Byrne, yes?
I say yes, yes.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you. I truly.
Who was out in the hallway when I came in? These two.
Joe Goodman and Brendan.
Okay. So when he came, I changed my mind.
He's a good-looking guy.
No, Todd.
Scott, Scott.
Scott, I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, I, I, listen, I've got 36 years of history in Vernon Hills. I'm not in it for the short haul. I had no gray hair when I started here.
Okay, that's true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, we'll see you when we see you. What, what, what do you do, what's your name, the little guy?
Oh, Joe Goodman. Joe's my director of leasing, he's been with me since he's nine years old.
What's your last name, Phil?
Literally, he started working for me at the, he was at the University of Iowa at the time, he was, I think, in between his sophomore and junior year, 21 years ago?
What's your last name?
Goodman.
Alright. Okay, well, I guess we'll see you in a month or so, I guess.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey, good night.
Good night now.
Christ. Okay, is Kemper here?
Yeah. Yes, they are.
Who's the pro at the golf course now? Did you change him?
No, we have not, so.
Who is it?
It's Kevin Lind is our general manager, so. Vince Juarez, Vice President of Operations for Kemper Sports, happy to be here this evening, Mayor, trustees. Joining me is Mary Kate Walsh, she's our Regional Sales and Marketing Director, along with Kevin Lind, our General Manager at the Golf Club. Just to kind of set the, the stage here, we met last year to talk about rates and, and pricing and we made the determination last year with your blessing to move to dynamic pricing. Dynamic pricing is a very, is a form of variable pricing that the pricing will change, in this case based on several, several factors, including weather, including the, the booking, the, the percentage of booking at the club and including historical figures and in this case also including the competition and where they're at with their t-shirts. So we made that determination last year and we're here this year to talk about pricing for FY, for the calendar year 2025. We're here a little earlier than normal, but we're starting the budget process and we'd also like to put rates into effect for annual passes and golf in case, of course, we can open in February like we did in, in this calendar year. This chart that you see up here is where we were at through October, the end of October. Rounds were down 2% year-over-year in, for the year at 17,751 rounds, but the story here is not that the rounds were down, but that revenue was up 10.3% year-over-year. So revenue was up $27,012 year-over-year with rounds being down 2%. You'll notice in July and August was the biggest dip. In July, we had two days with no carts and in August, we had 11 days where the temps were over 90 degrees and we also had that storm at the end of August as well. So overall, it was, it's been a great season, October's been a, was a great month, November has been wonderful, obviously we, we hit a dip starting really tomorrow with the temperatures starting to fall tomorrow. So we are going to recommend moving to dynamic, continuing the dynamic pricing structure in 2025, but we'll get to that in just a minute. I'm going to turn it over to Mary Kate, who's going to talk a little bit about the ADR.
So this chart shows our ADR for greens fee, cart fee, food and beverage and then our rounds as well. Note that this is for year-to-date through the end of October, so as you will see, greens fees are up $3.50 over the prior year, which is outstanding to see. Cart fees are also up, food and beverage is slightly down, but this does not take into account any of the holiday parties that we're expecting to bring into the facility. And as you can see, year-to-date rounds, so this is where we're at through the end of October, but we are projecting to meet our budget of 18,700 rounds here.
Okay, Vince, how much money did we lose last year?
Operationally, I believe it was $50,000 as far as EBITDA and then of course the below EBITDA figures, which would be capital and other village, village costs.
So let me ask you this question. If Kemper actually owned this 90, what would they do different if they owned it?
We would continue with the, with the, with the dynamic pricing model. We would certainly look at increasing price structures for residents, non-residents, annual passes. We would continue to push outings. residents, non-residents, annual passes. We would continue to push outings, continue to push beer prices, liquor prices, obviously invest in the facility like we've done, like you guys have done to start junior programs, which will begin next year. And I think we've, we're, we're well on our way to becoming operationally breakeven, which is what we've been talking with Assistant Village Manager Petrillo, Village Manager Timoney, and the Finance Department for.
But how much more, I guess, expense would you have to absorb? You'd have to pay your employees, not us.
If.
Well, we pay everybody.
Correct.
Correct. So if it's a Kemper-owned facility, you'd have to pay them.
Correct.
So how much would that cost Kemper a year?
Well, we would certainly have to look at the price, the salary structures of the current staff. I mean, we'd have to look at our general manager. We'd have to look at all the staff members and the operations. It's a pretty lean operation the way it is, cross utilizing all the various employees.
Okay. But, you know, I'll ask, hey, Tom, how much do we spend on this golf course a year?
So in fiscal '24, ended April 30, '24, we spent about five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Let's see, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, yes. So bottom line was a loss of seventy-two thousand after capital and operating losses and depreciation.
Okay, well, but we, we spend five hundred and fifty thousand?
Just under six hundred thousand.
Okay. And what do we get? What do, what do we get reimbursed? How much of that is in revenue reimbursed back to us, or what do we make?
So we charges for services, revenue coming in at about five hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Okay. So what would you say are net losses then?
Seventy-two thousand dollars.
Okay. And that includes paying them. What are we paying you a year?
Roughly forty-eight thousand a year.
Okay. But that's not that bad then.
Well, and the operating is, that's part of the, the increase they're going to talk about here, about two dollars across the board.
Yeah, again.
Well, that'll bring us up.
We always know this as a loss leader. But with that said, you know, it's not as bad as it is. It's not as bad as it could be. You know, yeah, go ahead.
So we've been working, we've been working with Tom, we've been working with John and Kevin to talk about the price structure for FY, for calendar year '25, FY '26. We moved the dynamic pricing, obviously, to reduce the operational loss and to get us closer to a breakeven from an operational standpoint. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, who's going to talk a little bit about the recommended price structure.
Okay, one last comment. We, we've spent on the improved practice area, putting green, was that over three hundred thousand?
Just over three hundred, three hundred and.
Hey, Tom, where's that, where's that plugged in to the budget?
So.
That's obviously a capital improvement.
Yeah, it was under the capital spending, excuse me, under the golf fund, and we had budgeted about three hundred and forty-three thousand for fiscal '25, our current year. And through the end of September, we're at about three hundred and thirty thousand. I believe the project's wrapping up.
Okay. So before we're going to see any kind of return on that, if we can, do you have that projection?
We don't. We just have the pricing recommendations.
Oh, that's okay.
But we can certainly prepare it for the budget.
Well, but that's part of the goal of the potential rate increase here is to bring.
It's not going to catch that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Tom. Take decades. What do you think?
Never mind.
Oh, you don't have any answer? Come on, Tom. Be realistic.
You know, you're going to drive more traffic with the putting green. The question is, how many will that convert to rounds, future rounds? Food and beverage, I think it's an opportunity to, you talk about increased food and beverage pricing. I think you should take a very good look at that, you know, because as you generate more rounds, you're also potentially going to have kids on their bikes showing up with their putter and their chipping wedge and cater to them and, you know, and, and having options for them, maybe help create a destination. As far as recapturing that capital improvement, I mean, it's capital improvement. I mean, maybe ten years, obviously, but the big question I have for you is like, you know, you dropped off on, on rounds and, you know, when you, when you raise prices, your revenue will generally initially look better. What in the industry, what data do you have that too much price range is going to sacrifice golfers or rounds? I mean, I know we had some weather anomalies and things like that, but we have that every summer, let's be honest, right? So I get concerned is, are the, you start creeping up towards that forty dollars a round number. There's a magic number out there right now, and it's, it's, it's fluid, right? Or it's, it's variable, right? Is my assumption within, within the industry. I'm looking at these other places like, I look at like Willow Hill, right? It's a nice golf course. It's nine holes, right? It's in a pretty fairly well-off community, so I'm sure they have a lot of golfers there. And so how much can, how much price can that course absorb without sacrificing, just losing more rounds year-over-year?
Sure, the elasticity, absolutely. How much, how high can we go without cutting into, without, without dropping down golfers to a point where, where the revenue doesn't sustain it? We haven't hit that yet. You know, Mary Kate and her team, the pricing team at, at the office, they monitor price elasticity. They monitor where rates are in the industry, where rates are in the suburbs, and that's one of the ways that the prices are dynamically moved throughout the muni. You know, obviously, weekend mornings where, you know, where demand is higher, when utilization is near, you know, peak at eighty-five, ninety-five percent, prices are moved towards the, towards the ceiling. And then obviously, during weekdays and some other slow periods, prices are more towards the floor. So we haven't hit that yet, to answer your.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm looking, it looks like you're proposing, so what did we do with the overlap, base rates? Was it a three-dollar increase last year, or is it, what was over last?
It was a three-dollar increase.
From twenty-four to fiscal rate twenty-five, and now you wanted, it looks like an additional two?
Correct.
Okay. So are you looking at the dynamic, and it looks like the price, the dynamic pricing is like a five-dollar range, right?
Correct.
Do you look at increasing the dynamic pricing a little bit more and not increasing the base more? Where do you get more bang for your buck?
Yeah, well, we'll certainly start at the floor. The floor will become quote-unquote "the rack rate," and then as, as those day parts fill in.
I know, so I'm saying like, if you don't move the floor as much, say like a dollar, instead of two, but instead of five dollars on your gap for your, what do you call it, dynamic pricing?
Ceiling, yep.
Your ceiling, do you increase that to seven?
Certainly could.
How do you look at that? Is that something, how many rounds, any idea how many rounds are affected by dynamic pricing? Is that a fair question? So you get fifteen thousand rounds, nine thousand had a dynamic price in it.
I don't have the total number that where it peaked over the, over the floor. I don't know if you do.
Or a percentage, is it more than half of the rounds or?
I would say more than fifty percent.
It is.
Yeah. So. But it's, it's a valid question, Trustee Schenk, where if we increase the floor a smaller amount and increase the ceiling higher, would we reach that ceiling faster? It also depends on day parts, though. Are we setting those day parts at one hour? So you're moving from ten to eleven or eleven to twelve? At the muni, we set the day parts at two-hour day parts. So they're not moving as quickly as maybe if we set them at an hour day part.
I just, you know, over a two-year period, you're looking at a seven-dollar increase on a base rate when it's, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's, it's a, you're going from twenty-two to twenty, twenty-nine in a matter of a few years on a nine-hole course. Granted, we had a big improvement, you know, and you could say, wow, we're justifying our price because we have this great new facility, which is great, but I think to the mayor's point, it's more of like a, an amenity than a profit generator. So I just want to, I just don't want to deter people in living on, yeah, of course, we live and die by the revenue, right? But eventually, that revenue is going to taper off, and when you lose them, you lose them. It's a lot harder to get them back. I just be very cautious.
In the area, we're, where would you put it? We're slightly above the midpoint. We're, you know, we're an upper-level course, but not at the top of, we're below Willow Hill and, and a couple of the other courses.
Yeah, but we are, we are nearing the peak as far as, to Trustee Schenk's point, we're nearing the peak as far as being one of the more expensive courses in the area. Now, keep in mind that Village Green is closing down in, in Mundeline. That golf course is closing, but we are near that peak.
Yeah, and you've already had some inquiries, haven't you, from potential leagues from Village Green, yeah?
Correct. I think the school pulled it back. It's owned by.
Who owned it?
It's owned by the Mundeline High, Mundeline High School.
Oh, it did. And they just passed that referendum too, so they're probably going to build, right?
I mean, we would be comfortable certainly raising it a dollar and then increasing the ceiling price that we, we would be certainly.
It's just my perspective. I don't know. I mean, it's, you have to propose and.
Go ahead, if you want to.
So actually, I was kind of talking, so basically, here's where our floor rates would be, and then looking with, where they could possibly be dynamic priced to, basically influencing floor by two dollars. This chart is just basically showing those same walking rates if someone was going to take a cart, and that would be with a cart fee of twelve dollars, currently more than eleven dollars per person for a cart.
Well, perhaps like Trustee Schenk said, if we can look at maybe not moving the, either the resident or floor quite as much, and you, seeing if we can use that dynamic pricing to pick up that additional money, see where that goes at least this year.
Yeah, we can run, we have the heat maps that we can put a dollar increase in, and, and obviously, it can carry over those heat maps to show what, where we were utilized this year and what that would do for subsequent year.
And we're at, what, seventeen thousand rounds?
It'll be, it'll be close to nineteen by the time we're done.
Well, you know, the bottom line is, this is a hell of an amenity for the town, and we want it to be that. Because the reality is, is that, you know, you want people, maybe the kids especially, if they're going to learn how to play golf, nine-hole is not a bad place to start learning.
Absolutely.
Yeah, oh, I agree. No, and, and if it comes down to, you know, we got to, you know, subsidize it a little more, so be it. I'd, I'd even say, you know, obviously, we could do something more for the residents.
Well, we just subsidized three hundred and forty-three thousand for the green.
Well, we didn't need to do that.
No, but it's something for the residents, to your point.
Okay. No, 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 no. I'm talking to get the kid on the course, okay? To quantify and determine what our payback going to be on the new greens and, and practice facility, come on, it's going to be a stretch.
Yeah, I believe that the.
It's, it looks nice. Hopefully, people come there, because it's probably nicer than a lot of eighteen-hole golf courses. But the reality is, if I, you know, I would, I don't have any qualms about, you know, subsidizing residents in, in some way, shape, or form.
I would definitely look at.
Because we're already losing money.
Right, and that's what, that's what Trustee Schenk is talking about, keeping the, the floor at the resident rate.
Keep the floor.
And allowing the, allowing the dynamic pricing to pick up.
Because then you look at season passes, you know, make it resident season passes, you keep those.
Right.
You, you're very.
Right.
Sensitive to that. And the dynamic pricing, maybe you have movement, and maybe, I mean, you're, you're going to have to plug the numbers in. If you put a, instead of a five-dollar range, you put a seven-dollar range with a dollar increase on the base, what does that look like for those peak times? I mean, I don't know how many rounds hit, what was your peak, what was your ceiling this past season for dynamic pricing? Was it forty-six? I don't know what I'm, without carts?
Without cart, it would have been thirty-five for a non-resident.
Okay, so thirty-five, yeah, because I think that's what I was looking at, right? So thirty-five, you know, what would that look like if it was thirty, thirty to thirty-seven? Right? If, if, if that was, what would, I'm curious what the revenue would project it out to be.
Yeah, we can make those.
Because if, if you had of that, say, sixty percent of your rounds were, were dynamic priced, and twenty of them were at the peak, and now you grabbing another couple of dollars off of that peak and not losing any rounds, we're actually better off, and we're helping the resident by having, keeping the prices lower.
Correct.
What's your, what's your method of calculating what the dynamic price is going to be for each day?
So in order to get the range, so we look at, there's a number of factors that go into the model. So past booking patterns, so when we look at what we're planning to do next year, it's based on the booking patterns from this year as well as historical T-shirt data pre-dynamic pricing. It's also based on weather patterns as well. We have a weather indicator every month that we look at that's on a five-point scale to see when there's better weather, you know, there's more golfers, higher utilization.
So are you determining the dynamic price a month in advance, or you're determining two days in advance, just as the weather?
It's happening in real time.
In real.
So within, based on T-shirt data and booking patterns. So when the utilization peaks to a certain point, that bumps the price up.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want to address the annual passes?
This slide shows where we were basically, where we've been at for the last five years with annual passes, what our pass holders were for the last three. Basically, what we're proposing is a seventy-five-dollar increase for non-resident passes and a fifty-dollar increase for resident passes. Taking into account that most of our, our breakeven point in our passes is in that twenty-five to thirty-two round breakeven point, with that two-dollar increase, that's just basically getting passed on to the passes.
So we, we have one hundred and eighteen passes last year?
Correct.
And that included residents and non-residents?
Correct.
Okay, well, here, again, I don't think I'd increase the residence fee at all, at all, to encourage people from town and the kids from town to buy a pass, okay? Because what is it up to now for a junior pass?
Resident five-day.
Four hundred and seventy-five bucks for a kid?
Four eighty for a seven-day, yeah.
I, I'd say personally, you know, they.
Well, what's the breakeven again? How many rounds was it roughly?
Um, anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-two, not residents, a little bit higher.
But don't forget, this is, you probably ran this based on a two-dollar increase of the base, right?
Correct. Correct.
So if you ran it again at a dollar increase, so it should, definitely should be less, right? Well, half as much, right? Which last year did a twenty-five-dollar increase, I think, right? And then this year, you're doing a fifty, but that's based on the two. If you want one dollar, what about a twenty-five-dollar increase on the resident? I mean.
Well, the.
That's a lot of rounds.
Well, the, the junior seven-day.
Rounds on passes?
The resident did go up just twenty-five.
Okay.
Last five-day.
How many rounds do you think people with pass, Tom, you're out there, how many rounds, people with passes, how many, or you guys, how many rounds, do you track the pass holders, how many rounds?
I can. My top pass holder from May one till current has played a hundred and seventy-five rounds this year.
Is that Tom?
No.
Trustee Cook?
No, I'm, I'm way behind.
A hundred and seventy-five rounds?
Now, Thursdays, we'll hopefully play two or three rounds in a day.
Okay.
Okay, that's the high. What's the median?
Medium, I would say honestly, our pass holders are very active, and it's close to eighty rounds. Because my five-day pass players, most of them play five days a week.
You know, a twenty-five-dollar increase, they're playing eighty rounds. I don't think they're going to, I still think they're, they're probably still getting a deal of the century.
Yeah, I'm, I am over a hundred.
You didn't have to admit that. But that's good.
But I make up for it in beverage expenditure.
Hey, you do you.
I, I do my part in food and beverage.
There's something to be said for that. Okay, well, I guess, I don't know, shit.
Well, you want to give us the, the other numbers with the one dollar and, and.
Yeah, we could certainly.
Take a year to see what the dynamic.
Yep, so I'm hearing, come back with a dollar increase on the floor. We can adjust the ceiling, and then I'm hearing, if I'm hearing correctly, the annual pass rates. No objection?
Twenty-five for.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five for.
Residents?
Residents.
Can, can you dial in how many, the average round a pass holder for the last three years have done? You know, you know, I don't know if you can. I mean, you went from fiscal year twenty-three, I'm just looking at resident seventy, five fifty to six twenty-five. You went from a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty-five round, of pass holders, right? And then the next year, you went twenty-five, and you went down a hundred and eighteen. So there's not much correlation there, right?
Yeah, very little movement.
So if, the sensitivity is not great.
Correct.
Well, in a good way, if we had to raise rates, right?
So in the five-day passes, Monday through Friday?
Correct.
Okay.
At a lot of our facilities, we've started treating Fridays like a holiday, or like a weekend, I'm sorry, like a weekend. But in this case, Friday is still a five-day weekday.
What's with the five-dollar, five oh five, six sixty-five, random numbers? How did you guys get to that?
They were increases over, you know, from, historical from years back, trying to, trying to calculate average number of rounds, trustee, with trying to keep it in that, you know, twenty-eight to thirty-two. you know, 28 to 32 round.
I know. Just people like, look at like this, like, you know, how it works.
Yep.
Okay. With the juniors and the seniors, okay? Do you have a breakdown of how many rounds those people play, the resident juniors and seniors?
We can certainly send it to you.
But you don't have it here.
I don't have it here with me, no.
Yeah, I, I'd still like to, to drop that, at least, I'd say 50 bucks.
Which one?
Junior and senior resident.
Do you make...
Drop the five-day to like, drop it to 425, drop the seven-day to like, what was it, 480?
Well, that's, that's what it, that would be...
No, no, proposal.
I'm looking at 530, Tom.
Yeah.
530 for the seven days.
No, I'm saying the 480 is what it currently is.
Yeah, well, I, I don't want...
They're wanting it to stay where it is.
Oh, yeah, it's, okay, good point.
There'd be no increase.
Yeah, it's just no increase for those people.
Yeah.
That's what I'd say.
I mean, you want to steer them into the seven-day, right? Versus the five-day?
I'd rather steer them into the five-day.
You'd rather put them in the five-day? Open up the courses for bringing in full price?
Correct.
Well, then let's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the, the, you'd rather have the pass holder have the five-day.
Okay.
So, you can pick up the extra...
So, you can open up the rounds for the, uh...
Correct.
So, maybe hit the seven-day, keep the five-day price. Maybe do 20 bucks to go 550 on the seven-day, but keep the five-day at 475, and that benefits kind of everyone, right?
Well, we were...
You're looking at me.
The five-day at 425, leave the five...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong count. And maybe go 500 on the seven-day to offset that. And then you steer people into the five-day, and then you can open your rounds up.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you tell us what, how many rounds we're getting out of our residents? Does anybody want all the resident numbers, or are you just resident, junior, and senior five-day, resident, junior, and senior seven-day? I, I'd say it's...
We can do them all.
Well, okay, that's fine. But I, I'm really interested in the juniors and the seniors.
And then where are we at? Are we fine with the, changing the, how do we need to do that to change the, the sale date from to calendar year? Is that just...
That would be a mechanism of approving these rates at our next board meeting.
Okay. And then, and then what we're going to do is we're going to change to where passes will be sold January 1 as opposed to April or May.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, we can sit on the money for a while.
Well, no, what it's always been, the awkward part of it is, is, is pass holders playing in March, and, and you're not being able to buy a new pass until April, and you're playing in March.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, it's okay.
Or you have that really nice, February, really nice March, but you can't take advantage of those increased rates.
And we don't have any covers on the greens, right?
No.
Because we're in muni.
It's superintendent's choice. So...
Okay, okay. All right. Is everybody comfortable with what we discussed? And this will be brought back in a more formal form?
Could we just clarify that members of pricing said we owe to change to what proposed would be to freeze the resident, junior, and senior?
Well, keeping the five, keeping the five-day but raising the seven-day, I thought was what we said, right? Keeping the five-day where it's at and raising the seven to what, what'd we say, 500 or 505, maybe?
What do you want to raise?
Were you saying 505 or 530?
Why, it's a, you're keeping 425 on the five-day?
Yeah.
I was saying at least 500 on the seven-day. I mean...
Or make it 530, and maybe that'll chase more people to the five-day.
Yeah, I mean, five, 530s.
Yeah, let it go 530.
So, 120, $105 difference then, 425 to 530?
Be a little plan the weekend.
For... Yeah?
So, we're keeping the five-day at 505 and 425, and raising the seven-day to 530 and 700?
530.
It was 480.
What are you thinking? No, I'm talking, I'm, I'm, I'm on a juniors and seniors. Just resident, junior, and senior for seven days. Leave it at 530, but hopefully chase people to the five-day at 425.
Right.
So, $105 less.
Right.
So, maybe it'll be...
But then you've also got the resident five-day and the resident seven-day we got to look at too.
No, we don't.
So, what number are you going to leave there then?
I'd leave them there. I'd leave the ones they recommended.
So, 650 up to 700?
Yeah.
And 505 up to 550?
Yeah.
50 bucks for other residents, other than juniors and seniors? I, I thought we were trying to give residents a break on the five-day, but that's...
That's what I thought it was supposed to be.
Would, if you want to do our residents on all four categories?
Well, no, what I was...
Wouldn't it freeze it all, all the way down then?
No, 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 we, we...
Oh, you don't have a say?
No, what we were talking about was freezing the five-day, the two-five-day rates and increasing the two-seven-day rates.
Can I make a recommendation? I think we need a little more data. Can we, of all these, what, eight categories, number of passes allotted to each category? I think that'll help us figure that out. And then they just, you know, because when you start getting into all this, if the majority of your passes are resident seven-day at 700, they're probably going to buy it again. You know, I just think, I don't know, you don't know what that is, right?
I don't have any.
You have no idea.
And rounds played.
What's that?
And rounds.
And then when they present it, we can look at that and say, this is what we want, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not, yeah, I'm okay. Is everybody okay? Changing all four categories?
No.
No, 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 no.
We're waiting.
No, for the residents, or just the resident adult, we're, we're going to change that. We're going to change the five-day to seven-day, and we're going to change five-days, seven-day for the juniors.
Yeah.
We're going to do all four in some way, shape.
Price TBD, right?
Either raise them or lower them.
And then the base, you're going to look at a dollar and then like at least a $7 range on the dynamic pricing?
Understood. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, is that about it?
That's it.
That's about it.
I move to adjourn to go to close session.
Do we, are we going to close session?
Yes, there is an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I already did.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
No, we need a roll call because we're going to executive session.
For land acquisition.
I don't get the do and I.
No.
No, this is a roll call.
I should have done it earlier.
Right.
Motion to go to close, uh...
It's going to be to the roll.
This needs a roll call because we're going to executive session.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, and we got a motion, a second, roll call.
Trustee Markwartz?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion here. Okay. You two got to go out in the hall.